Executive session from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. to discuss a number of real estate-related matters. We have two reports or presentations this evening. The first is by John Spagnolo from PFM Advisors and Mike Glacken from INR. They're going to review their results for our pension fund. We have two funds, two pension funds. One is our police pension fund, which has approximately 35 million, and our civil or non-uniform pension fund, which has about 28 million. So collectively between PFM and INR, they manage $63 million of our pension fund assets, and they're here tonight to give us a review of their performance for 2018. So, thank you for being here, John and Mike.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I believe you have the report electronically on your laptop.
Yes, we do.
Just to give a little context for the returns for the year for the police and non-uniform funds, on page 1, one are the quarterly market summary and annual summary and trailing history for the capital markets. So as you can see, the fourth quarter was just an awful quarter for equities. I think we all saw the daily drumbeat of sell-off in the equity markets across the board. And the S&amp;P finished down 13.5 for the year in the broader market, or for the quarter, rather, and 439 for the year. The broader market, the Russell 3,000 index, was down 14.3 for the quarter and 5.25 for the full year. The negative returns in equities internationally, same story, both in the developed and the emerging world. And bonds eked out positive gains. They had been negative through most of the year, but bonds rallied at the end on the flight to quality and the flight to treasury. So, the reasons, there's a multitude of reasons for that. You had continued, you had tightening, you had trade wars, you had not a recession, but the hint of a thought of a possible recession and slowing growth. So it was all of that. And you now had short-term rates at 2% or more, so cash started to look more appealing. And there was concern about another factors, just slowing growth internationally as well. The IMF forecast growth globally to go from 3.9 to 3.7, now 3.5. So you sort of had, I won't call it panic selling, you had a repricing of risk, and that led to the blow-off. It was the worst month, the month of January, for stocks since 1931. So, anyway, that's the backdrop for what occurred. Now, we've had the best January in 30 years, and I'll get into the present value of the pension funds momentarily. But if you flip to what is page 2.1 in what you've received, this will give you the return for the year for both the, for the police pension fund. So the annual return for the fund was a negative 5.28%. The benchmark's 4.77%. So it underperformed its benchmark and was a negative return. Assets at the end of the year were about $35.5 million for the police pension plan. So a very difficult year. If you look at the three-year, five-year, seven-year numbers, they improve. If you look out 10 years, it's up over 8%. So this is one of those periods where you just have a very, very difficult quarter. There's no place to hide. And our returns for the fund for the year, being PFM, is 5.37% versus the benchmark, and CBIZ was in at minus 5.34. So we're both pretty close to one another. If you look at the previous two calendar years, '17 was a good year, up 15%. This is on the next page. 2016 was at 7.13%. So there was some give-back this year. Now, as of January 31st, Thursday of last week, this fund is back up to $37,900,000. So it's gained a million and a half. On a percentage basis, it's gained 5.66%. So, you know, we're not erasing all the losses of last year, but it's been a very good month, and things seem to be moving in the right direction overall. So, that's a summary for the police plan. Briefly, I'd like to touch on the non-uniform plan, and that's on page 3.1 of what was sent to you. And that is the non-uniform plan, the return there for the year was 5.17. Our portion of it was a minus 5.14. CBIZ, INR was a minus 5.31. So very similar story, very similar allocations. You can see the value was 28,331. At the end of the year is Jan. 31. That's now 29,611. Net fund is up 5.67%. So, $1.3 million gain in this fund as well. So, things have somewhat reversed themselves so far this year. We think that if you can get through trade wars, government shutdown, a number of other factors that are influencing the capital markets right now, it could shake up to be a very good year. Not a very good year, but a good year. Equity valuations are certainly reasonable at this point. You can buy stocks pretty cheaply. And you're seeing some of these names in, like Apple, for instance, sold off and was in bear market territory. It's now rallied more than 10% in the last week. So some of the big tech names, you know, that were leading the market downward, seem to be reversing themselves. And we still see a lot of economic data that shows the economy is pretty strong. The jobs number last Friday, for instance, was up another 300,000. So we've had 100 consecutive months of job growth in this country. So again, there's a lot of, certainly, things that I think are, you can be optimistic about. And with having seen the market sell-off and valuations become attractive, we're seeing a lot of buyers, you know, come back into the market. So, I'll stop there in the interest of time, still to keep everything to 10 minutes, but, and I'll give Mike an opportunity to speak as well, but I'm happy to answer any questions right now if you have them.
I just had a question about the index that you use, I guess the benchmark.
Yes.
How often do you evaluate whether that's the appropriate benchmark? And you obviously want a benchmark that's fair to you and also fair to us and reflective of performance.
Basically, it's a blended benchmark of sort of 39% domestic equities, 21% international, 40% fixed income. And we use that as an overarching benchmark because it's the best way to get to the actuarial assumed rate of return, which is, you know, kind of 7.34%. So, that's one issue that we look at. And how can we achieve that over a reasonable period of time? So it requires clearly having some equity exposure at that level, about 60%, 65% or so. Now, we both, within your investment policy statement, have the latitude to look at other areas, whether it's small cap or large cap or mid-cap or REITs or high-yield bonds, for instance, and things like that. So, within the context of an overarching benchmark, we have the ability, as advisors, to seek out asset classes or asset styles that we think are relatively well-priced. So, but we do revisit all the assumptions, at least on an annual basis.
And the benchmarks, is it consistent with all your clients, all your municipal clients?
Yeah, they are. They're sort of right in, right in the middle of where we see most municipal pension funds. And we work with about 60 different pension funds in Pennsylvania.
Yeah. Great, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for John? Thank you.
Just quickly, just add a few quick points. One of the things that the plan did benefit from on both sides, the two pension plans own a tremendous amount of holdings and securities because a lot of the investments that we're both using are index funds. So if you ask, or if somebody asks you what holdings you hold in the pension plans, you could say you relatively own almost every single publicly traded stock across the globe. The winning asset class in 2017 was the one that was the loser in 2018, international. And back then, you benefited from rebalancing that both firms did. So in essence, you're constantly selling those positions that run, bringing them back to the target that John mentioned in the investment policy statement. So on a regular basis, you're constantly selling high, buying low, keeping the portfolio in check. Normally, it takes some time, a little bit of longer period of time for that to play out. But as John mentioned, so far this year, you've gotten back a majority of those losses in 2018 in one month, and you benefited right away from the rebalancing. Because what happened, as you said, in those indexes, you saw the international marketplace get hit pretty hard, but in that last quarter of the year, you saw almost a 14% decline in equities. You sold, you sold bonds at a high and bought a 14% discount, which then came roaring back in the beginning of the year. Because our process is mainly an all-index approach, it's so efficient, you're always going to be selling high, buying low on a regular basis. And that's already drastically improved the performance for 2019. And as was also mentioned, if you take a look at through history, you've beaten the benchmark over a 10-year period, over a seven-year period, the three-year period. That's very rarely done in the pension municipal pension world. And we sit on over 60-some municipal pension plans as well. And when you take a look at pensions across the Commonwealth or across the globe, it's very rare that they match the benchmark. But we greatly appreciate the opportunity, and I've already been rewarded for staying the course and getting back to the target that John mentioned in the investment policy statement. But thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for PFM or INR? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everybody.
I assume you don't want to stay? Thanks for being here. Thanks for the, thank you. Next up, we, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission has formed a co-op to procure streetlights, LED street lighting. And they have formed a co-op with 27 municipalities, and Harrahford's going to be considering that. And here, selected by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission as the contractor is Keystone Lighting Solutions. And here tonight to present on behalf of Keystone is Mike Fuller. Thank you, Mike, for being here.
Okay, thank you. So I understand you've already gone through previous phases of lighting upgrades to LED technology, so you're familiar with the benefits of that. What I wanted to do tonight was introduce you to the RSLPP program, which is run by DVRPC. We did complete a feasibility study for the remaining fixtures that you have to upgrade in your community, so I'll show you some of the results of that, the financial benefits of doing those upgrades and the costs associated with that. I may jump over a couple slides, just because of your familiarity already with upgrades to LED, but I'll go through this very quickly. As you're familiar, again, this is where I'll spend just a brief amount of time. Generally, by upgrading to LED, you're saving 50% to 75% in energy costs. You're saving a similar amount in maintenance costs. And it's just, it's really the standard technology now that obviously you see in all new construction projects that are going on in your community and other communities. So there are many benefits that you'll see, the financial side of, in just a moment here when we look at the financials. So the RSLPP program, so we're in the second round of the RSLPP program. And DVRPC basically wanted to put together a program to help municipalities that otherwise couldn't do these upgrades. And they found all these different hurdles that communities would have, whether it be technical expertise or financing or procurement capabilities. And they pull it all together into a single program, and it's turnkey that basically DVRPC plus their selected design professional, which is Keystone Lighting, we handle all these aspects of the program for you, obviously in consultation with you, making sure we firmly understand your needs and representing those in the design solutions that we come up with. So, I won't go through every word there, but generally, that's the concept of the program, is to be turnkey. So in round one, we had 35 municipalities. We're essentially at 99% completion with those 35 municipalities. We upgraded over 25,000 streetlights, over 5,500 traffic signal lights, all to LED technology. After those projects were paid for, some were financed, some were just paid out of pocket, after those were paid for, there was a net savings of 15.3 million over those 20, over that 20-year period. So, obviously, a very sustainable solution. All those savings come from energy reduction, so we saved over 10.6 million kilowatt-hours, and that translates to over 5,500 metric tons every year of CO2 reduced into the environment. So round two is 27 municipalities currently involved with the feasibility phase, and that represents about 15,000 streetlights. We expect that number to grow as we add in traffic signals and other types of lighting fixtures within a community. So the feasibility phase is the first of a four-phase program, and feasibility phase was no cost to you. We basically looked at your existing information from PICO bills and also information that was provided to us from the municipality. And we took that and basically did a general assessment of the opportunity that you have to upgrade, upgrade your remaining lighting fixtures, which is about 875. And so the goal of the feasibility phase is to put that opportunity assessment in front of you, and you're not approving a project to go from the feasibility phase to the next phase. You're just approving that I want to go to the design phase and have a real design done, real audits done on those remaining 875 fixtures, so we know exactly where they are, what type of fixtures they are, and we're designing the right solution. Now, we have an extra layer of design, I won't say challenge, but design consideration, is you have previous phases that have already been done. We're going to make sure that we're being consistent with what's already been done, both in terms of the aesthetics, the performance, the general illumination that those previous phases looked at. So we'll look closely at that and make sure that we give you the right solution, but also one that's consistent with what's already been done. Okay? Phase two, if you decide to go on to phase two, would be the real design phase with the audits and the design. This is also where we do pooled procurement for all 27 municipalities, basically leverage the size of that purchasing scale, and we get the best products at the best price, the best installers at the best price. And that helps us to be very cost-effective with the program. Phase three is construction. My firm stays on to do project management on your behalf. And then phase four is post-construction, verifying that the savings have actually made their way through to the PICO bill. So the feasibility study, which we're summarizing here in this presentation, basically walks you through, here's what you're paying now, here's what you will be paying with the upgrade recommendations. And that feasibility study is available, and there's much more detail in there. But generally, this is what we're talking about. Of the 875 remaining fixtures to be upgraded, 861 of them are Cobra head style fixtures. This is your basic roadway fixture of a variety of different wattages and illumination packages. And we will replace those 861 old heads, fixture heads, with new LED heads. So we take off the head, swap it out, the arm remains. Of course, if we find any wiring issues, we have to take care of that. That's a code requirement. So basically, when we're done with those 875 fixtures, they're not only efficient, lower maintenance, but they're also have been brought up to safety standards if there's any wiring You also have 14 of these decorative four-sided colonial fixtures. We're being consistent with what you did in the first phases, so it's just a real basic retrofit lamp. We will explore all sorts of options in phase two, so that is what we're assuming in the feasibility study, but if we see better options, we'll bring those to the table. So what are the financial results in this feasibility study? Basically, this shows you the payback associated with the project. I won't go through every number. I'll highlight some of the totals here. But if you look at the green columns here, those are your savings, energy and maintenance savings. Those combine into a total operating cost savings. I should have on this slide, those are annual recurring savings, so you get those every year compared to what you're currently paying. And then all the costs are one-time costs, so associated with the project. So you'd have material costs and install costs, pretty straightforward. KLS fees, those are our fees for phases two through four. So that not only includes the design phase, but also project management and also the post-construction services. Then you have the DVRPC program costs. They are recouping their costs for running this entire program. We do currently have a contingency in place, which is a 5% contingency, which was pretty typical for round one. You do get rebates from PICO for doing energy-efficient upgrades. That's all handled as part of this turnkey process. All the rebates, all the submittals for the application, we handle all that on your behalf. And so you can see that basically for these 875 fixtures, the total costs are about forecasted in this feasibility study to be 253,000, a total savings of 30,000. So that translates to a total project of 8.2-year payback. So, we basically, you were a little bit unique that you had these previous phases were already done. So the feasibility study assumes that the scope of the project is 875 fixtures. If you wanted us to go back and audit all of the previous phase fixtures, we can do that. And basically, it would be, let me find the number here. Okay, so it would be another $25,000 to include those additional fixtures. So it's about, you had about 2,500 of those fixtures that have previously been upgraded. You know, I jumped over a lot of the details of the phase-two services, but let me highlight that with the audit, it's a GIS-based audit. We go out, we look at every fixture, we take pictures of those fixtures, we gather about 20 attributes about that fixture and the pole and all that information. But it's an incredible inventory asset, inventory management tool. So we wanted to throw that out there to you. You don't have that type of GIS-based audit for the previous upgrades, but we could go back and at least audit those. They've already been upgraded, so there's no action other than just doing the audit and including that information. So that's not in the feasibility study, but we wanted to show you what that additional cost would be. You could also go the other direction and say, we don't want to do this robust, comprehensive audit for the 875, and there'd be some cost savings to do that, but then you wouldn't have the information that is, that comes with that audit. The next steps, phase two, already highlighted most of this. This is where we do the investment-grade audit, do the real design work, do the procurement on behalf of you and the rest of the program, confirm the funds are there for the rebates, and then that all comes into a final project proposal, so there's an actual specification there, very detailed, a very standardized design, again, consistent with what you've done previously. And then you would approve to go on to phase three, which is construction. It's just an example of the type of web maps that you would get, and there's, you'd also get all the data that's behind these web maps for your lighting inventory. But essentially, and I'm not sure, you know, we're not here tonight to do all of these steps, but basically, the next steps to move on to phase two is to just approve it through a resolution. And then I will be, for phase one, for feasibility, I worked for DVRPC to develop this study, but for phases two through four, I would actually work directly for you. So there is a design contract that piggybacks off of their previous solicitation for design services where we were selected, so you don't have to redo that procurement effort. But essentially, that would be the other piece that you would need to move on to phase two. So, a lot of communities want to know the amount just for phase two. I showed you the previous costs for phases two through four, but just for phase two, that would be 16,000, a little more than 16,000 to move on and get those phase-two design services, including the audit and the design services. Okay? So that's what we had for you to consider through this program. As I said, we've been very successful with round one. Many of your neighbors have already done this, and we have lots of great examples that we can point you to for, for references and, you know, case studies as to how those projects went. Okay? All right. Any questions?
Yep. Michael, can I ask you, when will the seventh ward be done with the LED lights?
So basically, the time-
It's Brooklyn, yeah.
Yeah. So if you were to move into phase two relatively quickly, we're basically, with 27 municipalities, as you are approved, that's the order in which we're going to do the next set of services. So we would start auditing, we're going to start auditing in March with those that approve the project to move to phase two first. Audits and design would go on for two to three months. You know, potentially, we could be back here in June timeframe, possibly quicker, to approve the project. And so the earliest probably any installation is going to occur would be maybe late summer to get all the products here, get the installers here. For 875 additional fixtures, that's really only a couple weeks' worth of work to do, so.
This is streetlights you're talking about, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Because I see some of the wards are done and others aren't, so.
So I guess all that remains is wards six, seven, and nine to do, as I understand it.
That's correct. It's six, seven, and nine.
Six, seven, and nine. And this is in our budget, and I understand that this co-op is going to give us an opportunity to save some, you know, substantial money.
It is. It wasn't budget, Commissioner. And it was kind of partly dumb luck that we were able to stumble upon DVRPC when they were doing a phase two and we were ready to do our final phase. As you remember, the first two phases, over 2,400 lights that we've done, were through another program that served us very well. But this program, with the buying power of all those other municipalities, will be able to save substantial dollars going with DVRPC.
Thank you for being here. Any other questions, Kevin?
You mentioned that you would try to make sure that the light fixtures were similar to the 2,400 that were already-
Right.
Do you anticipate any problems in terms of using the buying power, but also being able to find fixtures that are consistent with what we already put in?
Yeah, I mean, generally, across manufacturers, those Cobra head replacement fixtures are pretty similar-looking between manufacturers, so switching a manufacturer wouldn't necessarily look that different, especially because you've done them in chunks. And, you know, all the fixtures in a given area are going to be pretty much the same. We did in round one, if there was a manufacturer preference that maybe you used in the previous upgrade phases, we will include them in the procurement effort. And even if they're not the low cost to the rest of the program ends up going with, you could purchase that specific manufacturer if you wanted to. So we'll put that option in front of you. We'll basically say, here's the best solution for the entire program, but here's also what you bought previously. And they may be the best solution price-wise, or they may be slightly more. They're all going to be pretty close, but we definitely will make sure that we include those manufacturers in the procurement consideration.
I have a question. Do we ever look at putting, like, solar attaching to the lights to save energy?
We did not in round one. We don't anticipate doing that. I mean, PICO owns the pole. I don't know that they are looking, they don't sponsor-
They own the pole?
Yeah, you own the arm and the fixture and the wire, but they own the pole. So I don't know that, they're not supporting any solar roadway lighting projects, so I don't think they're going to want to put a panel on the fixture. I will say that they've been a very good partner for us to, bill updates have been difficult, kind of one-on-one, for municipalities in the past, but we do all the bill updates in one big effort for the entire program, and so, so, to the solar not planned or considered.
Mr. D'Amelio, we do have solar lights in a number of our parks along our trails. The dog park being specific was the first location we put two solar lights up. So we do have them, but they're not in the streets. They're more of a recreation.
Right, but we, PICO doesn't, they don't own those poles, do they?
No.
So the difference is PICO's owning the pole? I never knew that. I never knew they owned the poles.
I'm confused, too. You're saying PICO owns all the streetlight poles in the township? Because I've got, and one of my questions is the audit.
Right.
I've got dozens and dozens of poles that are rusting, rotting. The wire harnesses are exposed because of the rust.
Right.
And you're looking at the lamp and the arm, but is part of the audit looking at the serviceability of the pole and its condition?
We actually do. We capture the pole condition and the pole type. And the vast majority of communities, the, and, you know, until we do the audit, we don't know exactly what you have. That's part of the phase-two effort. But the vast majority of roadway lights in the whole region are on wood poles that are owned by PICO. But you may have some metal poles, you may have some lights on traffic signals. That will all be captured in the audit.
And you haven't audited the ninth ward yet, right?
We have done no audits. That's part of the phase two.
You'll find a lot of metal poles in it.
I agree, though.
In the first as well.
I think there's a lot of those poles-
Okay.
-that are damaged, and especially in the bottom, as Bill suggested or mentioned. So what happens if, when you do the audit and we discover, or you discover, that the bottom of the poles are not acceptable? Do you notify PICO and they come out and change them, or?
If it's a metal pole, we'll have to establish who owns the pole. You know, I mean, if it's a metal pole, it could possibly be something that you installed and you own, but we would have to figure that out. But if it's a PICO pole, then if, whether it be wood or metal or any type, if it's deemed to have issues, then we would bring that to PICO's attention and ask for that to be replaced. I will tell you, though, it has to be in pretty poor condition for PICO to come out and replace those poles.
Slap it with one of those orange stick- Slap it with one of those orange stickers that say "Seen and recorded."
Yeah.
And it'll be on there for two years.
Okay, any other questions?
What's the typical lifespan of the fixtures?
So, the LED fixtures, if you buy a typical fixture right now, an older technology fixture, you're going to get a one-year warranty with that. If you buy an LED fixture for Round One, all of our fixtures had a 10-year product warranty. There's also a one-year labor warranty that goes along with the project. The expected life of LED, I mean, if you look at manufacturer ratings, we're really looking 30, 40, 50 years out of that. If there are ever any failures with LEDs, they tend to occur very quickly because there are electronics in it, and we usually capture them definitely within the one-year period, but often during the construction period. So, and it's always a very small percentage, you know, less than a percent, and we capture those and replace them. Yep.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is the Commissioners Committee updates. Are there any updates from any of the committees?
Just a brief one. The Committee on the Municipal Plan met, and we finalized the RFP to advertise for someone to run the plan. And I think, Kelly, did we release that?
That should be going out this Wednesday. I've wanted to get a couple eyes on it first, but yeah, that's when it's intended to go.
Helped to do interviews by April.
April, okay. That's good news. Get that back on track.
Yeah, it's very good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Next is the Police Department Crime Update Report. Chief Viola?
The monthly report for January 2019, we had 26 criminal arrests, four juvenile arrests, 320 traffic citations were written, 22 non-traffic citations, and 268 warnings were written for motor vehicle violations, 231 automated parking tickets, and 56 handwritten parking tickets. The robbery, which is last month, the town tap, which you knew about already. We had a burglar in the 600 block of West Chester Pike. Nothing was taken from the house. We had two sex assaults reported from CYS. Mandatory reporting, we're investigating those right now. Motor vehicle theft in 200 block of Lee Circle, and the vehicle was recovered in Darby Borough with the key still in it. We had 12 thefts from autos. Of those 12 thefts, we had two significant arrests, which probably will clear up 10 jobs from the last month from patrol work from our officers on the, on good road stops. We had two bicycle thefts and 13 K-9 usages, which resulted in three arrests. And, that's the report for the month of January.
Chief, if I could ask you just unrelated, because next week we have the promotion of two people, one to lieutenant, one to sergeant, and then the hiring of one officer. Just interested in your views on staffing of the department, whether we, you know, obviously we're not a township that's growing and obviously want to make sure we're staffed properly, not understaffed, but not overstaffed either. So, what's your sense on staffing?
I've spoken to you briefly about that before. We did some research now. Right now, we're staffed at 70. We expect that we will go down to 69 next week because we have a retirement taking place on next Thursday, I believe it is. We have another one in March, and two projected for, in two years, for the next year, I'm sorry. So, with the hiring, we will bring us back up to 70 again, but then I'll drop very quickly. So, our 70 staffing has been that way for a number of years. That takes care of all patrol detectives, special operations, and any special details that we have out there. If you go, we looked up the Department of Justice standard, their recommendation for a township our size, a population our size, is 76 to 80 officers. But, we are very comfortable with 70. That maintains our minimum staffing level, which required to do by contract and for safety of our officers and our, obviously, the people live in the township. So, the number 70 is good for us. We like to continue to maintain that. Gives us staffing for, for myself, going down, obviously, command staff, sergeants, and lieutenants for patrol and detectives.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, turning to next week's agenda for our regular meeting. I have the appointment of a new officer, a promotion to one officer to the position of lieutenant, and a promotion of one officer to the position of sergeant. We have four ordinances for consideration next week. First ordinance is P. 1-2-2019 Cell Tower Lease Agreement, Second Reading. You'll recall, this is a ground lease, really, for, with T-Mobile. That's being amended because of the merger with Sprint. And our finance director and township manager and solicitor have all reviewed this lease and believe that it's something that is in our best interest to execute. So, does anybody have any questions about the second reading of the cell tower lease? Okay, thank you. The second ordinance we'll consider is P. 3-2019 Traffic, Second Reading. Again, this is, it relates to this municipal parking lot. Restricts parking for business use, people that are coming to the township for business purposes, and also for recreation purposes, a stadium or the ball field or whatever it is, but it's not to be used for private parking. So, any question or discussions on that ordinance? The third ordinance is P. 4-2019, which is the Brookline School Acquisition, Second Reading. It's the acquisition of the Brookline School, 1105 Arlington Road, from the school district of Harford. And we have, we're fortunate to have here with us the senior superintendent of schools, as well as the president of the school board and vice president and another director, I think. So, if anybody has any questions they would like to raise about this acquisition, the one thing I do want to emphasize, which we talked about last month, which is that if the township were to buy this property, there's been no decision reached about the end use for this property. That's going to be something that's going to be discussed in public with public input before we make any decisions. So, just want to assure the public they'll have an opportunity to be heard, and their thoughts and input will be seriously considered. So, anybody have any questions for?
I would like to just mention the fact that I went to Brookline School back in the '40s. So, what I would like to point out is the, a lot of people have come to me with different questions about the school, about what's happening and all, and I urge the people to come next week, because tonight's a work session. You cannot speak tonight, but next week, you call the Township Manager's secretary and get on the list, and you can speak if you want to find out all these things about what's going on with the acquisition of Brookline School. So, that's what I want to tell the people, because I've had many, many people on my block, the 400 block of Kemore, people over on Sagamore and Kemore and the 500 block have asked me what's going on, and I feel this is the way to tell them. Come here, come to the meeting, and you'll find out exactly what is going on, and next week is the time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGarty.
It is, it is worth noting that while we've not committed to what we are using the building for, we have made a commitment to the school district that it will not be used for strictly commercial purposes, that that is one restriction that we have all agreed to and would be part of any agreement, is that the school district, part of their deal is that giving it to us for a dollar is also our commitment to continue to use it in a public or quasi-public manner. So, that is certainly important to note when we indicate that, no, we've not committed to what its final use will be, except we've made the general commitment that it will be for some type of public use.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else have any questions or comments, or? Appreciate your coming this evening. Pretty uneventful. You might want to be here next week instead.
Yeah, I would just, I would just point out that although I think a lot of issues have been worked out in terms of some of the current tenants of the Brookline Building, there may be some interested people who had to stay home tonight to register for kindergarten at 7 o'clock tonight with the school district, so they might not have been able to come to this meeting. They might have some comments next week. But, generally, I think they've had their voices heard.
Anyone else? Thank you for being here. You don't have to stick around.
You got something else on the agenda.
Oh, you have something else? Okay.
Matinee.
I'm sorry?
Matinees coming up.
Matinee, okay. Okay. Next, the last ordinance for consideration is P. 5-2019 Property Maintenance Code Update. First reading, this is simply a change from the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code to the 2018 Property Maintenance Code, which has been enhanced, obviously, and deals with, you know, use and occupancy permits and construction standards and so forth. But, I think added, Joe Celia was telling me that added this, in this 2018 version, deals with energy efficiency as well as fire code standards, so-
Correct, Commissioner.
Yeah. So, it's just a simply a word, sentence change from 2009 to 2018. Does anyone have any questions about that ordinance or any discussion? Okay, we have a number of resolutions to consider, eight in total. The first resolution, 2117-2019 Emergency Management Coordinator. Unfortunately, Larry Gentile, our Township Manager, is retiring on us on March 31st, and he wears the hat of Township Manager as well as Emergency Management Coordinator. And so, with his recommendation, suggesting that we, effective February 11th, that we designate Chief John Viola as our Emergency Management Coordinator. Does anybody have any questions, discussions? Next is Resolution Number 2119-2019, and that is the county, 2019 County Aid Application, and this relates to our Liquid Fuels Tax Fund, where we apply to the county for the, from Liquid Fuels Tax Fund for our road, our 2019 road program. So, we've applied for, the requested grant for 2019 is $66,960. I understand also, we do a road program every two years, so, not every year, so we were able to roll over our 2018 funds into 2019. So, is that another $60,000 roughly?
$66,960.
Is it the same amount as this year? Okay. Okay. So, it's $132-something thousand in total that we'll get from the county, but that actually flows through the state to the county to us from, I assume, gas tax. Is that correct? Yeah. Unfortunately, that doesn't, you know, lets it pave a street.
It does, about a street.
About a street?
Yeah. But, we, this, as you know, we actually have, we'll be putting out on bid for the 2019 road program. I believe with this, with this county aid, the two, the two years, plus what we have budgeted, we will be able to do $1.6 million worth of roads.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Larry. Next resolution is 2120-2019, 2019 Mowing Agreement with PennDOT. This is an annual contract that we signed with PennDOT for mowing of 34 acres in the medial strips, and they pay us not very well. See what it turns out to be. It's $97.72 an acre for a total of $3,322 to mow 34 acres for the season. Clearly, their responsibility to do it, but Larry, and I think he's right, if we left it to PennDOT, it would be mowed once a month, not once a week. So, we choose to mow more frequently, so it makes sense for us to do it and take our $3,300. Would you concur, Larry?
I do, yes.
Okay, next resolution is 2123-2019 Regional Streetlight Procurement Program with the DVR PC, which was discussed-
Two of the resolutions.
I'm sorry, I'm, yeah. Okay, thank you. A resolution, 2120, 2121-2019 Professional Fee Schedule. This is a fee schedule that we approve every year for professional services that we render to the public, and they're professional services, either our township engineer or solicitor. And the fees are going up, but not significantly, anywhere from $3 to $6 an hour. This is not a profit center for the township. This is simply us trying to recover our costs, so.
I'm going to correct you, Andy. These are the approved fees for the township to pay hired consultants and experts for, to work for us.
For us. Oh, for us, okay. Thank you.
And I can talk about this one as well as the next resolution, the fee schedule, the general fee schedule as opposed to the professional fee schedule. Professional fees are not changed every year. Some fees go year by year and don't change at all. The township solicitor fee is not changing this year. The changes for our professional engineers range between about 2.5% to, the highest I've seen here is about 6.5% or 7% from $94 to $100. This is still well under what the market pays for consultants of the caliber, the folks who work for the township. Reflects two things. One, these professionals' dedications to our township, and the second, the fact that we're an 800-pound gorilla that gets to insist on these kinds of rates for these folks. So, while these are raises, these are well-deserved raises, at least from the perspective of the Finance Chair, and I think the rest of the board. And our services that we are charging to our citizens, which is the next resolution, very few changes in that. I encourage my co-commissioners to take a look at it. Some of these just reflect modern times. We now, for the first time, indicate a fee necessary for the, for the uploading of police body camera footage, and then fees associated with the necessary redaction that is required by law when the police upload images like that for the public. We have removed the fee for hanging and removing special event banners. Before anybody thinks that's a consequence of the lobbying of event banner hangers, it is exactly the opposite. You will not be seeing those event banners hanging over any of our thoroughfares anymore as we have determined with the assistance of PennDOT that they're not a good idea. Other than that, there's no significant changes in the, in the fee schedules.
Do you know, how do our fees compare to surrounding towns? Do we look at that at all?
I count on our people to do that, and so, I will turn over to Amy to identify one way or another whether any of our fees are crazy higher or crazy lower than our neighbors'.
I don't, I don't think they're definitely crazy higher. We do have to take into consideration that we're not supposed to be in the business of making a quote-unquote "profit," that we're supposed to be covering our costs, and that's why we're cognizant of not going too high in one year. There are a few charges right now that we are reviewing for next year, probably, so we're just, we were comfortable with what we had this year, but probably next year we'll have a few more changes.
Right, and sometimes, we've had this discussion in the past. Well, for instance, our trash fee. Our trash fee is, even though we passed it as part of our budget, our trash fee is in this fee schedule and indicated to that. We know our trash fee is lower than a number of our neighbors. We also know because our trash fee only covers somewhere in the 80% range of what our public works costs are that would be, could be delineated and dedicated specifically to the removal of trash. Several years ago, we significantly changed the fines and fees associated with the emergency response to false fire alarms. That was done for two reasons. One, it was done to more accurately reflect the cost of taking, of emergency personnel answering these fire alarms. And two, it was to encourage those recidivist fire alarm trippers that they might want to update their equipment so that we don't have to respond five, six, or seven times to what were obviously "false alarms," to use the phrase. So, that's, that's one of the other purposes we have for our fees, is also to try to encourage more efficient, more, more efficient business practices.
We happen to know how many chicken licenses we-
I do not. Off the top of my head, Mr. Celia might have a better idea?
One, okay.
One too many.
There's not been an influx, huh?
So, just for clarification on Resolution 2121-2019 Professional Fee Schedule, in talking to Larry, these, you were correct, Commissioner Holmes, but I was also correct, and these are the charges that we pass through for Dave Panoni to a developer fee where to charge. So, it was kind of a little bit of both.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification, though.
Thank you for correcting.
Does anybody have any questions on the proposed, proposed changes to the fee schedule for both those resolutions? Okay.
Larry, I assume with issues like the stadium and charges that we charge at the crack, that was within consultation-
crack, that was within consultation with Mr. Denny and people at the stadium as to what the correct prices are in terms of their budgets moving forward.
Yes.
Just to add, each department head is consulted on the fees that come out of their department, and it's with their recommendation to increase or keep it the same that we present these to you.
And, and none of these have changed. Everybody's form that they have right now has a form blacklined against last year, so you'll see there are fewer than a half dozen changes in this. Some of them are just additions, things we never had before. There's one deletion that I described. But for the most part, the stadium, parks and rec, our crack fees, they are all remaining exactly the same.
Any additional questions? Okay. Resolution Number 2123-2019 Regional Streetlight Procurement Program presented by Mike Fuller. And this resolution simply states that we're going to pay for Phase 2. Is that correct, Amy?
This is a resolution that will allow us to join into the cooperative purchasing program with DVRPC and to engage Keystone Lighting to do the design work to see if we will move on to Phase 3 when the time comes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions on that resolution? No? Next, next resolution, 2125-2019 Land Development Linwood School. It's both preliminary and final. So, Kelly, I don't know whether you want to make some comments either from there or come up and?
I can sit here.
Okay.
So, this was our eighth meeting about this plan. It's gone back and forth between the planning commission and the zoning hearing board. They were cutting into some steep slopes. They had to receive a variance for that. And additionally, when they are building the new school and the old school is still standing, they're going to be briefly over the 40% impervious coverage maximum, so they received a temporary permit to do, to allow for that. Other than that, we're, you know, new playfields, new school. There's a few waivers that were granted, most notably for the requirements for curb and sidewalk due to a walking path that's going to be enlarged and maintained further into the property to keep the, you know, pedestrians and kids away from Lawrence Road. So, we thought that waiver was appropriate. Other than that, that's, you know, pretty much everything in a nutshell.
And received the final approval from the planning commission on January 7th?
January 24th.
Yeah, it says 7th.
That was the last plans were revised on January 7th.
Okay. Does anybody, I don't know whether anybody from superintendent to the president of the school board would like to comment, any?
In case there were questions.
Does anybody have any questions of this school district? We have the high-powered team.
How long is, how long is the planned construction supposed to be?
Do you want to, could you just step forward to the podium and state your name? Thank you. I like your Augusta sweatshirt.
Great place. Beautiful place. My name's Ken Matthews. We're the owners of that for the school district, so we can answer any construction-related questions. We have the design team here as well. So, construction, the goal would be to start, assuming it gets approved by the school board in May, June, this summer. And then it would be two, two years of construction for everything to be finished by August 2021. For that school year, the students would move in. So, the existing school stays functioning throughout this whole time, and then over that last summer, we demolish the school, finish the parking lot, and in the fall, finish a field. That replaces the Linwood School at that time. So, it's a, it's a big benefit to not have to move the kids any, any temporary facilities, so it works out very well.
What is the total cost of the building, the school?
Oh, we're still finalizing our budget right now. We're hopefully going to go out to bid here before too long, so.
What do you, how much, how much larger is the Linwood, this, the new school versus the old school?
The square footage, it's a little bit larger. It's almost identical in size to the Manoa Elementary School. It's about 80, 85, this one's 88, 86. We ended up back, so much back and forth.
How many kids can you accommodate?
It's to replace the same students that.
You're not anticipating any growth or reduction in?
No, I mean, it does have a little bit of extra space, but for some growth, but generally speaking, it's for the existing body.
Yeah.
So, it's about 35 classrooms, 35 classrooms.
When are you going to do Cooper Town? I didn't expect an answer on that, but can you put that in your, in the mix somewhere?
But yes, it should be, should be a great project for the district.
Sure it will be.
I know a lot of former students would like to be there to help demolish the old one.
Yes, every building does have its time.
Cooper Town, indeed. Anybody else, any questions? Thank you so much for being here, everybody. Appreciate it very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next resolution is 2126-2019 Minor Subdivision 217 Walton Hill Lane. This is a, zoning hearing board gave some relief. It's a single house which has additional land to develop another, another home on, so it's just a pretty straightforward subdivision. Is that accurate, Kelly?
That is pretty accurate. They received a variance from the zoning hearing board because the existing house currently encroaches under the side yard setback. They want to subdivide while retaining the existing house. So, in order to do that, they need to receive relief for that encroachment to remain. Otherwise, there's, I mean, this, conditions of approval are a bit lengthy on this, but mostly due to a strange situation with one of our sewers running through, diagonally through the property that needs to be moved by the builder. But otherwise, you know, pretty straightforward. It's a, you know, a lot that exceeds the minimum requirements for the, for the zoning district, and it's one single-family building that's being proposed.
What are they testing for, then?
Testing? I mean, there's some, I think, some water runoff or water, groundwater recharge that needs to, I think, be completed.
Can you clarify that?
Just how fast the rainwater is absorbing to the ground. But I think most of that was probably done.
Commissioner, is salt testing on the property, probably excavating a modest-sized hole? That would, that would have been for, to test the soils, our ordinance requires a certain amount of runoff from the impervious surface to be captured, put underground, and percolated into the ground for water quality purposes. So, the testing would have been to confirm that the soils can accommodate that ground, that rainwater, and that when it actually gets underground, it will percolate into the ground.
And has, has shown to do that or no?
I didn't see the results yet. We know from that area of the township. We certainly anticipate that it will. The purpose of the test is to confirm that it will.
Oh, there's a, there's a small stream behind there, isn't there?
There's a small stream in the back.
Right. So, there's some concern there, but, so how do we put this on the agenda if we don't know if it's going to handle that?
Well, first thing, I could check to see if we have the results. I'm just telling you, I don't know if we have the results or not yet. We could have them.
We can always table it if we want, Steve, obviously.
I may, I may want to do that. I just want to make sure every, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, because I have, I've had some questions from neighbors that live around there, and they have a right to, to know what the facts are, whether or not it can handle that, whether the testing was concluded, and what were the results of that were.
We'll see what you can find out. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
I'll check on the status of the test results.
Okay.
There's a lot of steep slope on this property as well, is that right?
Hmm?
Did most of the property, the footprint of the house?
Did not encroach into the, into the steep slope enough to where they required a variance for the steep slope, no.
We have any problem with the clock on that one?
Um, no, I think I did the math with the deadline, and we are okay until the, whatever I did with it. I lost it. I think it was the March meeting would be our deadline.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion on?
For the, for the work session, would we table this for the work session or?
We can't. I think it's on the agenda already.
We're on the work session. For the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, you can do it.
Yeah, you can table. Yeah, because on the 27th, I'm having a first word meeting. You might want to talk about that further. And if you have the results by then, I would love to have it for that meeting. You should have it by then.
I'll check.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Next, on the agenda for next week are contract awards and purchases. I'm going to let Larry review those with us.
Certainly that. Every two years, we redo our gasoline and heating oil contracts, so you're out on bid, and I believe that the bid openings are this Friday, and we would obviously recommend that the lowest responsible bid. And we do this every two years. We do this for every two years with our street lighting. That's normal practice.
Okay. Any questions on the contract, gasoline and oil? Larry, you want to talk about the purchases that you're recommending?
Certainly. All right, we have the purchase of some highway equipment from, this equipment is for public works. We have two 2019 Ford F-350 pickups. They, obviously, when we purchase all our equipment, we get with new plow equipment as well, like we did there this year in 2018. These vehicles will be propane power. As you recall, we have two propane-powered vehicles now. One is a Ford pickup truck, and the other one is a, I believe, a Ford, as we call, a lowboy dump truck, which is, I think, a 550 rating. And they're working out very well and saving, obviously, that the gas prices are actually dropping, so I think we're still somewhere in the vicinity of about 75 cents a gallon cheaper savings using the propane.
Where do we, where do we get our propane from?
Right now, we get our propane at the, at this, we purchase it through the school district. The school district was, was very instrumental in converting several of their school bus fleet over to propane, so they actually have a propane tank at their facility. The more trucks, I would say probably by the year of 2020 now, that it would be cost-effective for us to have our own tank.
Yeah.
The more vehicles you get, the can, the tank comes, it's free, and there's no, there's no purchase for the tank. It's just how much product you're going to use.
Yes.
Cost-effective.
Yeah.
But we have such a good relationship with the school district. We actually even get our fire, our diesel, diesel fuel through them as well, and the fuel for our, our ambulances are done at the school district as well, and then they just bill us and we, we pay them.
That's great. Then the recycling bins?
The recycling bins are purchasing, I believe, 900 recycling bins at a cost of $16,785, but 90% of that will be paid for through our, our grant that we receive, the performance grant that we get every year. And I believe this year, we were somewhere in the vicinity of $285,000. So, as we recall, we had already purchased a, a recycling truck and a trash truck with that as well. I'm sorry, recycling vehicle, two recycling vehicles, one for the yard waste that we do on Mondays, and the other one is a small recycling collection vehicle that we would use to go around to our parks and pick up the recyclable materials.
Any questions for Larry on those two agenda items? Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Will.
Then finally, we have appointments. First is the Cable TV Advisory Board. We have any applicants at this point for that position?
I had not seen anything for the Cable Advisory Board, but I believe we, we did.
We have three.
I did receive an email today that I forwarded over to Gloria to send out for an interested person to, for the EAC, the Environmental Advisory.
Oh, EAC, okay. And then I think we have three, three applicants for the Shade Tree Commission, so we'll be interviewing those three applicants. The board will be next week. Then we have the Environmental Advisory Committee Commission for two-year term, Ward 4 and 6, and the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Board one-year term, Wards 1, 4, 6, and 8, make their appointments. So, I think that's, it covers the, everything on the agenda. Does any commissioner have anything to add or any other discussion or questions on any of the agenda items? If you're not, you're in, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.